All right. Good evening, everyone. It is seven thirty and I will call the special meeting of the West Richland City Council to order. For those who don't know me, I'm Mayor Pro Tem Fred Brink. I'm filling in for Mayor Gary tonight because he is out of the office this week. And so we will get started, but before we do, I will ask our city clerk Stephanie to read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call roll for city council.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor pro tem to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Present.
John Smart?
Here.
And Stoker?
Here.
All right, thank you. Council, you have the agenda before you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to move that we remove from the consent agenda item three A and move it to section four ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearings is item four A.
Do I have a second? Second from Councilmember Smart. All right, we'll move item three A to four alpha. So with that, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All right, we have motion in a second to approve the agenda as revised. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Now we'll move to the consent agenda, which is a motion to authorize Mayor Gary to enter a second contract with Washington State Department of Commerce for the periodic update of the comprehensive plan for the state's fiscal year, July twenty twenty five to June twenty twenty six. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on the consent agenda, that one item? I see no one in house. Is there anyone virtually that would like to comment? If so, please raise your virtual hand. The city clerk will then unmute you. You may state your name and city of residence for the record and provide your comments. You may also press star nine to raise your hand via telephone. I see one person attending virtually. I do not see a raised hand. Do you, Stephanie?
I do not.
All right. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right, motion carries. So we'll move on to item four A, which is the ma- which is the motion to authorize the mayor to sign Axon master service services and purchasing agreement, vehicle and body cameras, tasers, AI program, VR training program. And I believe Chief Frye, you are going to present a staff report.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, typically when we remove items from the consent agenda, the requesting council person usually begins with what their concerns are. And then we move to the staff report.
Thank you, Stephanie, for that. So I will move first to Councilmember Stoker with regard to his concerns on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So it just seems, reading the write up, this feels very expedited and I just wanted to make sure that this is on the audio record as well as the printed record for why we need to do this in such an expedited way, so that it's more transparent to our citizens. And anyone who's listening can can get that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Stoker. Chief Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. If possible, we would like to give a PowerPoint presentation and explain why we wanted to move this so quickly to this date and there'll be an explanation within that, if that's okay.
Yes, please proceed.
I would ask Commander Kelly to present this. He's been working on this project for the last three months. And I believe that when you work hard on an issue, you should be able to present and try to justify that to the council.
All right, Commander Kelly.
I'm sorry to, is it, sorry, what's the file name for your? PD nine twenty-three? Okay, just to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to start with, it's probably been several months since I actually started looking at upgrading Axon. And then I was approached by a couple officers about looking to upgrade some of the things with Axon, one of those being the tasers and another one was the draft one, which would be the AI assisted report writing. So I started up again, started looking at some things, trying to figure out the cost. Started working with Alex Aguilar, who's with Axon, who's on Zoom right now. So this is what we came up with as far as what we're gonna do for this package. Eighteen Axon Body Four, Body Four cameras, so that's what we have right now. We're gonna get the extended warranty instead of renewing our contract at the end of twenty-six, which is when our current contract expires. We're gonna do eighteen taser tens. Right now we have sixteen, so not everybody in the department has one. So we're gonna go with eighteen taser tens. The taser tens are an upgraded version, which eventually the taser sevens, which is what we have now, will be obsolete. So eventually we'll have to go to the taser tens anyways. Taser tens have ten shots with them, ten probes instead of the four probes but two shots right now with a limited range of twenty-four to thirty feet, I think. The new ones are forty-two feet, if I remember right, so a lot more range. If you get a bad contact with one of the probes with the current ones, then you have to shoot your second set of probes. If those don't work, then you have to reload, you have to pull the cartridges out and reload. These have ten actual individual shots in them. At least two of those have to have a good contact. One of the trainers that came to speak with us at the department during our research was that they're all training to do three different shots. So you're getting a better chance of getting a good contact for those. With the taser tens is a VR program, which some of the council members attended that training. It's virtual reality, where you can practice doing target shooting, both with a firearm and the taser. And then it's got real life scenarios in it and I'll get to some of those after a little while. Some of the software that we're doing, right now we have sixteen evidence.com pro licenses, but we're using about twenty-five of them. Axon hasn't been charging us for those. So with this upgrade, I said, well, I don't really want to start paying for twenty-five licenses. So they gave us seven for free in this package and we'll pay for a couple more. That gets us all of our clerks, Stephanie, who does our body cam redaction and all that stuff. Unlimited storage, the full VR, Axon Respond, the AI airplan, the My Ninety and standards, which I'll, I'll talk about all that in a little bit. We're gonna stick with the Fleet Three cameras are new, but we're gonna stick with sixteen of those because we have sixteen patrol cars. We won't add an extra one for the SRO, but these are the upgraded. Right now we have Fleet Twos. So with the upgrade, it comes with a ALPR, which is the license plate reader, where some of you may know we have the flock cameras stationed throughout the city. It's similar, except these are gonna be mobile. They will pick up stolen cars, anything that goes through NCIC, like wanted persons, the amber alerts, the silver alerts, anything like that. When an officer's driving around, if they end up getting kidnapping suspect that was involved with amber alert, they're gonna get alerted right away through their ALPR, through these cameras. So that'll be a big upgrade for us. Okay. So the taser ten, forty-five foot maximum range, ten individually targeted probes. Any probe can do the contact, kinda like what I talked before. Integrated with the Axon virtual reality system and these are enhanced weather resistance. So with these, they're a little bit bigger than what we currently have, so Axon's gonna provide new holsters for everybody. And then as you can see, most of the, most of the officers are wearing jumpsuits. These taser tens will fit in the current holsters on the jumpsuits that are sewn in, so we won't have to replace any of those. Parts of the virtual reality training, what it comes with is the headset, a Galaxy Tab S nine, a bag, a taser seven, a handgun, and then a taser ten controller. That's it. So true life, true life to virtual environments, replicate the stress officers encounter in the field, allowing them to practice decision making under pressure. So some of the scenarios that we have in this is real life training that includes covering trauma, mental health, peer intervention, along with a bunch of other things. Some of the mental health things are schizophrenia, autism, suicide prevention, Alzheimer's, hard of hearing. So it's not just going in and doing a shoot or don't shoot scenario. Some of it's a, hey, you're dealing with a mental, mental illness with a person, how do you handle that? And I think with some of our newer officers, this will help them gain confidence when they're doing this in a virtual reality scene in a safe environment, they can get this training in front of their peers, instead of trying to do it in real life and trying to figure out their way through it as they're going through an actual call for service. So they'll gain that confidence dealing with it through the virtual reality. And then, of course, you do have the shoot, don't shoot, and then the, the targets and stuff like that for target shooting. It also includes the taser recertification, so the officers can certify right on the virtual reality, instead of having to actually shoot targets and shoot the probes, which we have to pay for every year, every two years when they certify. Generally, we've been bringing everybody in on overtime, they go through the training and then do all that stuff. So this will help save that when they can just go and do it on virtual reality when they're on shift. They'll have a trainer come in and, and run them through the, run through the training. They can do this throughout their shift, they can run the virtual reality with their sergeant when there's downtime at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning. They can come in, run fifteen, twenty minutes on the scenarios, get some training, and then go back out onto the road and patrol. Stephanie, if you'd move on to the AI innovation part? Yeah, one more. So this is the AI airplan. So this is a whole plan that is a package deal. Comes with unlimited auto transcribe, so with the body cameras, it will transcribe what is said during the, the transaction with individuals, it'll transcribe it on the side of the screen. So you're watching the video, it'll transcribe it. If the person is speaking a different language, Spanish, or Russian, or Ukrainian, or whatever, it'll trans, it'll translate it for you in the transcription. Draft one, which is the report writing version of this, it's an AI assisted report writing, uses the the body camera footage to draft a report for the officer. I know that other agencies that are using this find that the reports become more standardized and the, the courts and the prosecutors find it a lot easier to read because the AI is actually pretty smart. And it will, it will change your report, not change, but it will put things in your body camera footage. Let's say a witness says something up here they're talking about. They're talking about the specific car that was stolen and then they start talking about something else and then down here they start mentioning the car again. The AI will put it back up into the spot where they're originally talking about the report, so it just makes their whole report flow a lot better. Some of the concerns that we had, along with the prosecutors, was making sure that the reports were accurate and that the AI was not putting stuff in there that it shouldn't be putting in there, or that the officers were verifying that that was true and correct for what their report was. So what Axon actually does with draft one is it, we have the ability to put in there a certain percentage that the officers have to input into their report. So between zero and forty percent, the officer has to put their own words into that report. Right now we've been demoing it and it's a, we've had it at thirty, thirty percent that the officers have to put in there. And I know Detective Magania is doing a lot more than that because he's been doing interviews and stuff with it and it's cut his time in about half for doing his long interviews. So it's saving him quite a bit of time. Along with that, it puts in there some sentences that are recommendations for the officer, like maybe you should add the description of the house here. So the officer either has to delete that and then put the description of the house here, or put your probable cause statement here, and then the officer puts their probable cause statement there. And then the last thing is Axon will put in random sentences that are not, obviously not belonging in the report, like the purple, purple elephants running down the road. If the officer does not delete that out of the draft one, it will not let you copy it. So draft one is a separate program than what we use for RMS, which is our Tyler report writing system. So the officers right now, they're just writing their reports in either Word and then copying it and pasting it into Tyler. Or with this system, they'll write it in draft one and then they have to copy it and paste it into Tyler. But it will not let them copy it out of, out of draft one if those sentences are in there, or if they don't have at least thirty percent in there. So that prevents some of that concern that we had, that they weren't gonna be writing their own report, basically. This helps them lay it out in a, in a meaningful manner where the, where people can understand it. Real time translation. We have a video in there, probably in a little bit, that gives a quick demonstration of the instant translation. It uses your body camera to translate. In our demonstration, Officer, or sorry, Sergeant Barrera and Detective Magania were our, our individuals using it. And so Sergeant Barrera picks Spanish, because Eddie speaks Spanish. And then he says, I'm Sergeant Barrera, this is why I stopped you. And then it translates that into Spanish. And then the, the Spanish speaker speaks it in Spanish and then the body camera picks that up and then it translates it into English. Officer Warren told me that he's used it twice so far. One today with a Ukrainian speaking individual. So it's come in handy already, just from us demoing it. Policy chat, so we will upload our policy into policy chat. The officers will be able to select the button on their, on their body camera. Ask, what's the, what's our policy on j-walking? It'll search our policy and it'll say, the West Richland Police Department policy is this, and it'll state the policy. So that'll help the officers from having to call the sergeant, say, hey, what's our policy on this, or having to go look it up while they're trying to deal with the situation. They can do it on their, on their camera. Part of that too, which I'll get to is down here a little bit. Some of these aren't out yet, so I don't know all about them. But once they do come out, then we're automatically included in them with this package, so we won't have to pay extra for those items that are available coming out still. So like I said, it was saving Detective Magania about fifty percent on his report writing just from his interviews, because he does usually like two or three hour interviews on his cases. Instead of having to watch a piece of the video, type out a portion of his report, watch a portion of the video, type out a portion of his report. The AI, the AI generates it for him. He puts in what he would normally put in his report. He'll delete the things he needs to delete, he'll read over it a couple times, he'll watch the video a couple times. So it'll save him about fifty percent of the time is what he's, is what he's saying. Same thing with patrol. I don't know exactly how much it's gonna save them, but we've had three of them demoing it. I know one of them has said that it saved him about a half an hour just on a criminal citation, which is pretty good for, for just one case. So it'll help keep the officers on the road and out on patrol instead of stuck behind a desk or stuck behind a computer writing reports. The city attorneys are on board for the draft one and the prosecutor's office is on board as well, Benton County Prosecutor's Office for the felonies. They're on board and they are just wanting to go over a policy for it, so. Some of the testimonials from other departments that, that they've done for trial periods, they saved sixty-seven percent, sixty-one percent, fifty percent. Much of time that they've saved from using draft one for their reports. I went over that. Axon Assistant. I had to ask Alex what this was, because I wasn't sure what this was, but this is actually like a like an Alexa on their chest, basically, where they can ask their body camera, hey, what's a, how many ounces are in a pound? And it'll search the internet and it'll tell them how many ounces are in a pound. So if they're doing something like, hey, how much is a stopping fee if you're going thirty-five miles per hour? It'll tell them how many feet it takes to stop at thirty-five miles per hour. So this will give them some extra information that they have just at the, at their fingertips, instead of having to look it up on their phones, especially if they're on the contact with a certain individual, they may not wanna divert their eyes off of that person, so they can just do it with their body cams instead of typing it on a phone or looking at their phone. Real time translation. Stephanie, can you jump to that? And then there's a video. And hopefully there's sound. Okay, well, we'll give it a shot and.
Hey, I'm Sergeant Barrera. The reason why I stopped you is you have an outbreak light. Was hoping I could see your driver's license, registration, and insurance. Do you know English?
No.
Spanish?
Español.
Okay, hold on, okay?
Translation. Press that hold button, then say, translate to X or auto detect. Then release.
Translate to Spanish.
Language set to Spanish.
So I'm Sergeant Barrera, West Richland Police Department. The reason why I stopped you is you have an outbreak light. I just need your driver's license, registration, proof of insurance. Also, since we're using this camera of mine, I'm gonna prompt you to tell you when to speak because I have to push a button on it. You understand?
Soy el sargento Barrera del departamento de policía de West Richland. La razón por la que le detuve es porque quiere una luz trasera roja. Solo necesito su licencia de conducir, registro y prueba de seguro. Además, como estamos usando esta cámara mía, le quitaré cuando hablar porque tengo que presionar un botón en ella. ¿Entiende?
Sí, yo entiendo oficial.
Yes, I understand myself, officer.
Excellent. If I can get your driver's license, registration, and insurance, please.
Excelente. Si puedo obtener su licencia de conducir, registro y seguro, por favor.
Sí, espérame un momento.
Yes, wait for me a moment.
Okay. So policy chatting skips through that one. Redaction Assistant. This one is going to be a big one for Stephanie, who does our redactions for body camera footage. What the redaction assistant does is it'll make it a lot easier for her to, let's say there's a juvenile involved in this, in this case, she can click on the juvenile's photo. It will redact that child's face throughout the whole video, instead of Stephanie having to go through and do it on, throughout the whole video herself. This'll do it automatically. There's a child's name in there, she can click on the, the child's name, redact it through the whole transcription, it'll delete it. A lot of our laptops are C G S protected information, so she can click computer screens and it'll, it'll blur out the computer screen throughout the whole video instead of having, instead of Stephanie having to go through. So this will not only save the officer's time having this whole package, but it'll save Stephanie a lot as well. My Ninety is also part of this package and it comes with a couple different things that, that we like. Previously, we had the sergeants doing a citizen contact for each officer. So if they respond to a theft call, the officer or the sergeant may call that, complain it and ask a series of questions. Hey, how was the, how was the officers or something that we could do better? Were you satisfied with the, the product you received from the West Richland Police Department, that type of thing. Sergeants were doing two of those per officer per month. With My Ninety, we can actually tie it into dispatch and it'll send a text message out to the RP's on whatever, whatever we stipulate we want it to. So if we want to do just disturbances or just thefts or just property crimes, we can select which, which RP's we want contacted and it'll it'll automatically send out a, a text message with a survey to those reporting parties and they can just respond back to that text message and it'll give us a good insight of, of how the police department's doing and what's and how we're doing. Another portion of this is employee surveys, so we can actually do an internal survey with the, the police department. We can send it out to the, the officers, the clerical staff, anybody within the police department. And we can get an anonymous response back to them and get it compiled and see how, how the officers are doing, whether it's wellness, whether it's how they, they feel the administration is doing, if they're liking this program or what they'd like to see in the next budget cycle as a priority, that type of thing. So we can put out any type of questions we want. We can get feedback from, from just about anybody in the police department. Axon Standards is something that we were looking at. This is a way for us to track the use of force, the pursuit critiques. And we'll be able to add in different forms like our FTO program. We can add that in. Right now the officers can't access that from their cars. They have to go into the office and connect to the network to get the FTO program. If they're able to do it from their cars, they can add comments in, they can do the, the daily observation reports while they're sitting and running radar with a new officer, instead of having to go back to the office one or two hours early to complete their paperwork. So this will be able to keep them out on the road to be able to do that stuff. I know Benton County is working with, or at least I heard, maybe Alex can, can address this, but I heard that Axon is working with Benton County to try and get Axon to link in with Wadeps, which is the Washington State Reporting Use of Force System that we're required to report use of force. So if that happens, we'll be able to just dump it directly from Axon directly into Wadeps instead of us having to input it directly in there ourselves. So that'll help that way, but, but if not, then we'll still have the standards where it'll track all the use of force and all that stuff. Analytics, it'll track the, the crimes within the city, all the analytics and stuff like that, because we'll tie it in through the GIS through dispatch. And it'll, it'll track, instead of having like a, a crime analyst do it individually, Axon will do it for us. Okay, contract comparison. So some of the money stuff, which was Councilman Stoker's concern. I worked, I've been working with Alex to try and get this down to something where we can afford it. Axon is at their end of year fiscal, fiscal year budget. So they gave us a substantial, substantial discount in order to get it completed this year, so that's part of the rush. If we wait till our contract is up next year, we'll see an eight to ten percent increase because January one, the prices are gonna go up through Axon. So whether we stick with the current contract and just renew the same contract in, in June next year, when, when this current contract's up, we're gonna see a eight to ten percent increase just on that. But Axon worked with us a lot, a lot on this to try and get it down. Like I said, they gave us the seven free licenses. They knocked off thirty thousand dollar one-time expense for the They knocked off uh thirty thousand dollar uh one time expense for the um. What was that one? The uh? Standards package. Um, and Alex can probably talk about all the other discounts and benefits. Um, we jokingly said that it was the Commander Kelly. Discounted price uh just because of the the prices and stuff that we got down. So that's that's partly. Why we're trying to get this done so we can get it done, get that discount, um, get it done before the. The next year before the end of this contract, so we can save that eight eight to ten percent. Um, plus it's just a benefit for the officers to get this program. We'd like to get it started and get it going. That's it for my presentation.
Thank you, Commander Kelly. Um, before I turn to council for questions or comments. I just want to give the opportunity for any citizens to comment as well. If there any, is anyone present in the room who would like to comment on this? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and kind of limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no one, is there anyone attending virtually who would like to comment? If so, please raise your virtual hand. If you cannot raise your virtual hand, please press star nine on the telephone and the city clerk will unmute you. I see one individual, Stephanie.
Yeah, good evening, council. This is Alex Aguilar representing Axon and uh. I just want to thank you all for the consideration of this project. Commander Kelly, chief, um, have put in a lot of work uh over. The past probably four or five months at this point through in-person evaluations, trials. Um, first person feedback, their work with finance and and the city attorney. You know, this has been something where we've looked at several different options at this point, um, all across the Axon offerings and come to a. A package that we feel collectively makes the most sense moving forward to set up the department for long-term success. So. Just want to give a a thank you to Commander Kelly um and the rest of the team for all the work that you've put in. And thank you to council for the consideration of the project. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Is there anyone else attending virtually who would like to make a comment? I do not see anyone else. Do you, Stephanie?
I do not.
All right. Seeing none, I'll turn to any uh. Council member questions or so forth, please use your cards just so I can keep track of everything too. If you wish to ask a question.
That would help. You're right. Thanks, Ken. Go ahead.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the Axon master services and purchase agreement.
All right, council questions. Uh, Mr. Stoker, Councilmember Stoker, go ahead.
Please, thank you, Commander Kelly. Yeah, I actually just really all I wanted to make sure was that this was on the audio. Um, I think the citizens deserve to hear this presentation. It was an excellent presentation. And I certainly appreciate all the work you and the rest of the police officers have gone through to demo this. It sounds like it's. Quite a good uh experience. So um, I'm pleased to hear all of this. And it looks to me like the way it's been negotiated, it's pretty much what we're paying right now or a little bit of a savings, but. Looks excellent to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, thank you, Commander Kelly. Appreciate the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. Um. Uh, let's see. So I was hoping to hear in each of your points, um, and you did mention this in many of them. The comparison between, you know, what you do now and what it costs versus what you would be able to do with this system. And what it costs, but there were a couple of them that I picked out. So for example, uh amber alerts, uh you mentioned how it will handle amber alerts. How? How does that contrast with how you handle those now?
Uh, right now, we would only get those through the flock cameras, which are stationary throughout the city. Uh, we don't have the license plate readers in our current cameras in the cars. So if we get those in the cars, if uh an officer's driving down Keene or Van Geesen. And they pass a car that was involved with an amber alert or it's been entered in as an amber alert, they'll get that alert when they're driving. Whereas right now they're not going to get that alert unless it passes by a flock camera.
Okay, so then the license plate data of all the cars that the officers vehicles are passing or seeing. On the road are getting recorded and sent back and then compared to a list.
They're getting checked through N C I C, right?
Uh, you mentioned a little bit about the augmented reality training. Um, how is confidence training achieved now?
Uh, right now it's through um on scene training, like we just did an actor shooter training um a couple of months ago. And so we got actors and we had the whole department there and ran through a scenario at Enterprise Middle School. Um, other than that, it's um if the sergeants are doing it on their own at roll call training or or roll call briefings, stuff like that.
Oh, would you still participate in those type of trainings as well as the A R?
Yeah, yeah, I would. Yep.
Okay, I think that's important because I mean, I've seen air training systems in general and. They're great, but. They're just not quite the same.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's good. Um, I ran through, we didn't have access to every single one of those during the um trial period. But I ran through some of the shoot, don't shoot and the taser trainings and stuff like that. And and I thought it was pretty beneficial on those, so.
So on that same topic, um, I take it for the taser training, there are like fake probes or surrogate probes, you're not using real ones during training. And I was curious about the cost of the training.
Yeah, we we have training probes that um are their actual probes with darts. And then we have some that are Velcro. Is that correct, Roman? Yep, okay.
Make sure the Velcro ones are loaded.
Yeah, so we have a suit that um. That the actor can wear or whatever to do the training and stuff. And then there's targets that are the Velcro.
Yeah, and those are all reusable. And a same question, I mean, will you still continue to practice with the real? Uh, surrogate guns and the Velcro darts or?
Uh, those are not reu- they're not reusable.
Oh, they're not? Okay.
Nope, um, we buy new ones um every year and um. The taser tens don't have, um, well, maybe Alex can talk about that, whether or not they have the. The Velcro and stuff like that, but I'm pretty sure we're just going to stick with virtual reality training.
Really? So this will be a conversion entirely to virtual reality. For taser training.
Is that right, Alex? His hand up.
I'd be happy to hear his response.
Oh, there we go. I was able to get unmuted. Yeah, uh, so. Going forward, there will be V R training, but there will also be halt training, which is what we refer to as those training cartridges. Um, and those will all be included in this contract delivered on an annual basis at the contract anniversary. So there won't be anything. Paid for in terms of taser training or live taser deployments moving forward. Uh, there is duty replenishment included in this contract where any uh field use of the taser ten darts will be replenished as part of the contract. As well as the annual training cartridges uh delivered each year at the contract anniversary date.
And what what kind of quantities are we talking about? This is for the full uh, am I aware they're sixteen? Or eighteen?
Eighteen tasers.
Eighteen tasers?
Yes, that is correct.
And and so a training package includes how many rounds per year?
So going forward, it'll be five halt um per officer per year.
Okay.
And that'll get them up to standard with the taser recommended recertification annually.
And that's included in the roughly hundred and thirty two thousand per year?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Five years, each five years, right? Um, okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Um. So I I love the translation capability. Um, I mean, I know you can do that with Google today, but but like you guys. Obviously recognize it's nice not to have a have to have a phone in your hand. Um. I was going to ask a couple more, maybe more difficult questions here. How many hours? This is kind of for Stephanie, like how many hours per year would you estimate? Over a five-year period, you know, that you would spend redacting videos, Stephanie?
Well, it it definitely varies because sometimes, you know, there's um. Incidents within the year that are more requested, but if you think about it, if we have more than one officer. Responding to an incident, which typically there are, it's double the video or triple the video for the same incident. Um. But quantifying, um, typically the length of the video, I um estimate it takes about three times the length of that video to review and redact. You know, it's always going to take the length of the video itself. So if it's, you know, an hour-long incident or an hour-long recording, um, that's an hour just. Watching it, but then um, you know, added time for the redaction, which currently is if there's a minor or a person that needs to be. Redacted, it's following it along through the video with the box and yeah, and so this would be dramatic.
How many times does this happen a year on average? I mean, that's why I said like over the last five years, does this happen once a year? Does this happen ten times a year?
How many requests for body cam?
Uh, yeah, right. With with the required for redactions. Well, you always have to watch your body cam before you release it, right?
I would say probably on average five incidents, but then if there's a complex one like the the Wiley shooting last year, that's. Hours and hours of video to review, so.
Great. And then the second hard question is, um, what percentage of time would you say your officers spend writing reports? Now, without this system.
Yeah, without the system, that's a good question. Um, obviously it's going to be different for each officer. Uh, a lot of them are. More experienced, so it doesn't take them as long. Other ones are um. More proactive and they're doing longer reports. I know talking with Detective Magania, it's. Four or five hours for a a sex case for just one interview for a person that he's watching the video. So if he's doing multiple interviews, then it could be up to twelve hours or fifteen hours of report writing.
Yeah, but how many times does this happen in a year? I'm trying to get a feel for the burden of report rating on an officer per year. Is it like five percent of their time or fifty percent of their time or?
Or writing?
Yes, right.
Yeah, I don't I don't know the statistics on that and I'd hate to just guess.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get the value proposition figured out, right? So we're charging a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars a year, roughly a hundred and thirty six. Whatever it was. And when we divide that by house tops, which I always like to do and announce that to the public, you know, we've got forty five hundred rooftops, maybe five thousand. We're talking about asking each um household to pay between twenty six and thirty dollars a year. For this enhancement to our police force. So just, no? Please. Correct me.
Getting our current, our current, um, we pay almost sixty thousand a year currently.
Oh, for the Axon camera. So it's only so it's only half of that?
Yes.
Oh, well, it's just a bargain then. Okay, that's a great point, too. I was going to ask that comparison between the two. You'd mentioned the comparison between the tasers guns.
Yeah, our current, our current contract is just the the Fleet Two cameras, the Taser sevens and the Body One cameras. So for those those three things, I think we're paying almost sixty thousand a year.
Right. So my line of questioning was basically to help establish the fact that. Between the savings that our city clerk will uh presumably encounter with the A I assisted redactions. And the daily or weekly aid to our officers saving. I'm just guessing. I don't know. I I you didn't give me a number, but I would guess they spend at least five or ten percent of their time. Maybe five percent of their time writing reports. I didn't get an answer from you, so I don't know, but.
Day, two or three hours.
Three hours a day, yeah. And and the shift is how many hours? Twelve hours. So a quarter of your time. Okay, and when you look at the uh cost of an officer. You know, and and saving a quarter of their day. Uh, I think we easily, we would have to justify saving one half of a police officer basically over the course of a year. Actually, only a quarter of a police officer now that I'm figuring that we only have an extra sixty thousand versus the full hundred and thirty two. So I think it it sounds like. An equitable deal. I I I wanted to go through it, right? Because I don't want to just approve a hundred and thirty some odd thousand dollars worth of extra expense. To our citizens because I always imagined myself going to their door and knocking and saying, ma'am, would you mind giving me ten dollars because our police officers really need it? You know, but now I have a a recorded reason for saying that this sounds like a good investment. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Councilmember Smart. Councilmember Marianne.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, first, uh, thank you very much. That was a really fantastic presentation. Would we be able to get a copy of that? Just, I'm kind of curious because I want to look back at it. There was a lot of information in there. Can we? I mean, I'll take that also. Yeah, that would be fantastic or just if we could get it emailed. Thank you. Um. So I I've got questions and it's not so much, it it's not because I'm against this. It's more because I'm sure that people would like to have some of this information just to be aware of it. So first, uh, I know that it was gone through in here. Um. The list of what we currently have is we've got the Fleet Two cameras, the body cameras, the Taser Seven. And is that it?
That's it.
Out of all of it? Okay, sorry, switching fingers so that I can. Taser seven, thank you. All right. Nah, I got it.
I throw one that in there.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Well, uh, right now we have separate contracts because we added cameras and things like that. So another time saving would be for finance because I know it's a hassle for them getting multiple contracts a year to try and figure out. Oh, did we pay that one? Have we paid this contract? We paid that contract. So this is going to streamline that by putting it all into one contract for them.
Sure, absolutely. So along with upgrading the Fleet Two cameras to the threes, right? And the Taser sevens to tens and the body cameras would be upgraded as well, right?
Being the same.
Okay, so they would be staying the same, but we would also be getting all of the other extra things, the A I. The cameras for the vehicles, for the auto license readers, auto license plate readers, correct? So a bunch of extra stuff that we don't have currently for. Not that much extra, it sounds like.
Right, yep. And this is going to have a five-year warranty on the body cams that we currently have. And then um, they're going to be replaced halfway through. So it we get brand new ones halfway through the contract.
Nice, okay. Um, so then next I'm wondering for the V R tra- is it V R or A R training?
V R.
It is V R training, okay. So for the V R training, I'm wondering if that was created, and it might be a question more for Alex, but you might know. Um, if it was created in partnership with or if it was reviewed by mental health professionals or other providers that deal with. Um, some of or treat some of the issues that are specifically looked at like Alzheimer's and whatnot.
I do not know that answer, so.
Yeah, I I can take that one, Commander. Yes, uh, that is correct. Uh, this was created by Axon with the help of mental health professionals as well as. Hand in hand with law enforcement. All of these scenarios that are out today have been heavily vetted prior to release to ensure that they are. Good to go. Um, because moving forward, we release, uh, we have five more scenarios that are slated for release later this year. As well as also a verbal skills training that will be released later this year where officers will be. Um, placed in scenarios where they do not know how the people or person in that scenario are going to interact with them. Sometimes they may be fully cooperative. Sometimes they may be very aggressive. Um, and officers will have the opportunity to train their verbal skills for de-escalation tactics as well. So this is something that um us as a company, we're very passionate about, but passionate about doing it the right way. So that our partners in law enforcement get the most value out of these tools.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And then I'm curious if the training that's provided here is actually. Covering some of the required training that we would normally do elsewhere, like either through C B Ts or whatnot.
Uh, some of the training as far as de-escalation and some of and stuff like that will uh cover this. Uh, so some of that um part of the new grant from the Washington State. Um, some of this training will fulfill some of that requirement, some of those requirements.
Excellent. So some of the things that we might be paying even more for, we wouldn't have to because this would cover that.
Correct.
Okay, excellent. Um, I'm curious about the A I recognition. I know that in the past there had been concerns in general about A I recognition of people with darker skin tones. And understanding that one individual was not another individual, but because of the tone of their skin. It was confusing the two. Do you know if that and that also might be a question for Alex? Has that gotten better?
Uh, I'm not sure about that, but we're not looking at any type of facial recognition, A I stuff.
I was talking more about like the redactions.
Oh, um, like whether it's going to redact a person instead of not redacting them? Oh, um, like whether it's going to redact a person instead of not redacting them? Yeah, that might be an Alex question.
Yeah, Commander, I can take that one. Um, in terms of the redaction, it's identifying objects that it deems are, fall under certain categories, like for example, faces, uh, license plate screens. Um, what I will say is it has gotten a lot better. And to add to that, there will always be a human element. Uh, there's not a world where, um, any of the redactions that Stephanie is, uh, working through will not have her confirmation on all, every bit that's being redacted, whether it's audio or any of the, the faces, um, screens, notebooks, anything like that. So she will always have to give her stamp of approval prior to that redaction being completed.
Excellent. So very similar to the AI, uh, report writing where it would have to have somebody verifying and going through it, whether that's looking for the purple elephants or just verifying in general the video to make sure that whatever needs to be redacted is redacted. Excellent. Um, all right. And then I'm wondering, because I couldn't hear it very well, uh, Officer Barrera, uh, was the, I, I know that I heard some of it and it was, it was close. I'm, I'm curious for the section where it was translating from English to Spanish. It was a bit quiet. Was that fairly accurate or was that ish?
The Spanish translation? Uh, well, I can tell you that George does not speak much Spanish. Um, but.
Wrong, Officer, I'm sorry. It's been a long night.
Uh, Eddie, Eddie said that it was, um, it was accurate, but it was more of a, um, proper Spanish and not like a, a slang type of Spanish, so.
More like the Castellano out of Spain rather than.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Yeah. And that's what I was wondering about, whether the regional dialects would be able to be picked up. Um, if the speaker was speaking in a specific regional dialect, uh, again, might be a question for Alex. If the AI was able to know enough so that maybe the officer wasn't thinking that they were saying, oh yeah, I got a, a pound of Coke in the back of my car versus, oh yeah, I've got a Pepsi in my vehicle.
Yeah, Alex.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, um, right now it's available for 53 languages. Um, Spanish being one of the very first that we tested and released. Um, moving forward, we are going to continue to improve the different dialects. For example, you know, Guatemalan Spanish is very much different than the Spanish that's spoken in Spain. Um, and so right now, um, it is accurate in picking those up, but the responses are going to be more of a proper Spanish. Um, so that is something that we're cognizant of and we're going to continue to improve. Um, the more that we roll this out and actually get field feedback.
Okay, thank you. And I only got a couple more questions, I swear. Um, so, uh, for the VR, I, I heard that there were some Samsung tablets that would be used for that. Is that accurate?
There's one Samsung tablet that it comes with. Uh, we had it during the trial period, but we didn't use it. So I don't know if Alex can explain what it was actually used for.
Yes, the tablet is just for the streaming, so that two officers can be completing the training. Um, or maybe the trainer wants to follow along and see what the officer's seeing while completing the training. Uh, the VR headset can also be streamed to the television. Uh, so if there's a large group doing a group training, um, everybody that's present can be watching the training and provide feedback.
Which is what we did in the squad room. We had it on the TV.
Excellent. Excellent. Um, and then two last questions. One, I'm wondering which platforms are being used for the AI and for the Alexa-like feature on the, it's on the body camera, right?
So all of the AI tools are built by Axon, are CGIS compliant, and they're all closed models within Axon. So we don't use any third parties for these models. These are all models that we've built. Um, and that's really important to us, uh, from a CGIS compliance standpoint.
Thank you. And then the last one I was wondering was the ALPR. Is that always active? Like if the vehicle's on, is that active, even if maybe they're going to or from work? Or is it just you have to activate it and then it's active?
My understanding is when the camera is on, then it's actively reading license plates when it's driving.
Okay. And the camera would be on if the, if there is more than one other in the area or if you manually turn it on?
It would start recording if you manually turn it on or if they activate their emergency lights, it'll start recording.
Got it. Okay, awesome. Again, thank you so much. I know that's a lot of questions, but I know that there's a lot of folks that might've had those questions and it's easier to get it answered here than to have them trying to call up and, you know, call you guys all the time asking you. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. This is a game. Um, just like I was saying, it, it, when you put something out there and it's rushed, um, I would really like to ask that something comes up again like this, that let the, let us know, let the people know, all the residents know, and give them time to, to work through. Okay, what are we asking for? What are you really getting these questions that, that we've had? Um, I think it will be beneficial, um, for all the officers and I stand behind the officers completely. And I want them safe in order to keep us all safe. And thank you, Chief, for working on this program and, and Jared and Aaron needs tons of thanks for uh, coming up with the money and, um, figuring out a way to make this work so we can give back to our officers that they deserve. So thank you all for everything you do and thank you what you put together here.
Councilmember Hayes, Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, just one last quick question while we have Alex on the line here. Um, the license plate readers, I know that, uh, like repossession, um, outfits will go through Walmart parking lots and so forth. They, they will track license plates and, um, feed them into a big database and then they sell that information and they market that, uh, so that they can then drive through neighborhoods and then, um, find traffic patterns, you know, which house goes to which stores and things like that. They build up this database over the course of years. I have to ask, does Axon, um, do sell any of their license plate data that they collect from either the cars or the Flock cameras?
No, sir. And something that differentiates, uh, the Axon system from the Flock system is all of the evidence uh, and the hits are the police departments. Axon does not have access to any of that data.
Okay, excellent. That's, that was, that's a great answer. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Commander Kelly. Appreciate it. Uh, just my final comments. I actually was, uh, able to attend the, uh, training and demonstration that was done on August 28th with, uh, Councilmember Bloom. Uh, Councilmember Fettow was also there. Uh, and as I recall, several of the officers, including Detective McGonya and, uh, Sergeant Brer, I remember seeing you there as well, and several other individuals. Um, I thought it was great. Um, tremendous resource for our officers, but particularly when we have such limited staffing, I think we have 1.2 officers per thousand here in this city, which is below the state average significantly. When we can take time away from doing reports, doing administrative work, to being out there and protecting our citizens, that's the direction that we need to go in. So I'm all for this. I appreciate everyone's comments and the detailed questions. Thank you, council members. And, um, we have a motion on the table to sign the master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. We do have a second citizen comment period. Provide the opportunity for any citizens to provide public comment. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium. State your name and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing no one here present, uh, anyone attending virtually who would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand or plus star nine on the telephone and the city clerk will unmute you. I see no one virtually. Do you, Stephanie?
Not.
All right, with that, uh, we have no other business this evening and I will conclude our meeting at 8:29 PM. Thank you all.
But she shot first.